Tuesday afternoon, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, and I call this meeting of the Beltrami County Board of Commissioners work session to order. Ah, how about new employees?
Good afternoon, Janice Sigina, nine-one-one communications supervisor. I'm here today to present our new employees as the new telecommunications that just came on. I'll start with Jolynn Willis.
Hi, my name is Jolynn Willis. I just started two weeks ago. I graduated from Minnesota State University of Morehead with a criminal justice degree. And found out about this job and just got started and so far I really like it.
Awesome, welcome.
Thanks.
Uh, next will be Hanja Brahm.
Hi, I'm Hanja Brahm, and I was a teacher for ten years and decided to go back to dispatching. I did it like twenty years ago, and I'm glad I did because it's a lot of fun, less stress.
Really?
Yeah, less stress than teaching. I taught middle school, so.
Oh, I get it now.
Um, I'm actually from North Carolina, so.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Marissa Cruzey.
Hello, hi, Marissa. I just graduated about a year ago from the UK. I live over there. I studied terrorism, security, and radical extremism for my masters. In undergrad, did international relations and history, and I previously worked at Buckingham Palace as a warden. So, um, yeah, I'm happy to be here with this lovely team, uh, working in dispatch, so I'm happy to be part of this, so thank you.
Welcome.
And Scott Long.
I'm Scott Long. I'm a North Country first responder since two thousand one, Kali a first responder since two thousand eight. EMT with the Black Tack ambulance, had my own business for thirty-one years and took a different turn and joined another team to help people.
Awesome, thanks, Scott.
And I'm not sure if we ever were able to present Amanda Pedersen. She is our new team lead for dispatch.
Hi, I'm Amanda Pedersen. I've been with Beltrami County for ten years now. Janice and I kind of took over at the same time. I took over her spot in team lead, and she took over the supervisor spot. I am in charge of the whole field training program with all of our new employees, um, taking on kind of from all aspects. It is quite extensive. It's a six-to-nine month process, um, depending on how fast they move through it, but we gear the program towards, um, everybody's learning needs and and make sure that we're meeting that, so.
Thank you.
And that's everyone for us, thank you very much.
Thanks, Janice. Any other new employees? Oh, and by the way, sorry that you didn't get the memo that we weren't starting until three-thirty. I hope this didn't waste your afternoon too badly. Okay. All right, there you go, thank you. All right, does anybody have, uh, future work topics that they want to bring up? Joe?
Thanks. Uh, voting accessibility and election integrity. I think it would be nice to have a presentation from our, um, county auditor, our head elections person, uh, if we can fit it in next month. Only if we can fit it in next month, you know, because it is that time of year where I think, uh, mostly for the general public, uh, it would be good to be, reminded of how, uh, secure our elections are and, uh, talk about, uh, um, how accessible our elections are. Uh, I've, I've heard some concerns from, uh, constituents that, um, you know, they maybe are going to the wrong polling place or they're not registering correctly. I think this would be a, a timely presentation from our head elections person, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, anybody else? No, okay. Um, gee, today would have been a good day for that, we've got a short day. Okay. All right, uh, housing trust fund update, Anne.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Anne Lynsath, Director of Health and Human Services. And for those listening, I'm going to provide a brief background on our housing trust fund. We created it in two thousand twenty-three through passage of county ordinance number fifty. And really, the impetus to creation of the housing trust fund was some new funding that we received through the Department of Revenue. We had two funding sources that were new to the county, um, local homeless prevention aid, and then our statewide affordable housing aid. And this board identified that we had some real challenges around housing availability in our community, um, and also affordability affordability. So we wanted to look at some creative solutions with this new funding. Um, and I applaud the board's decision to move forward with a trust fund because that allows us to have more creative solutions for development of housing. We need to develop housing along the full continuum, and this housing trust fund is going to give us that opportunity moving forward. So I think it's, it's a new idea that, um, is going to benefit us considerably into the future. Because it's new, um, and because we have new funding and new processes, we had to look at the significant investments necessary for administration of the housing trust fund. And so in late two thousand twenty-three, we opened up an RFP looking for an agency to administer the fund. We did receive two responses to that RFP, and the administration was awarded to the United Way of the Bemidji area. So what has happened since we awarded that RFP? United Way has been busy at work. Um, we have, the first thing that was tackled was the cabinet makeup. Uh, the ordinance does require a cabinet that's a decision-making body that represents the community. And so, um, the process to develop the cabinet, um, was started through the United Way, and there was a number of representation that was identified to be part of that cabinet. So I'm going to read the representation area, and then I'm going to read who the person is on the cabinet. So we have our county commissioner representative, Commissioner Gould. We have myself as the human services director. We have the executive director of the United Way, which is Dana Alamanu. We have a United Way board member who is Megan Stegoff. We also then have a commercial real estate banker, Carl Johnson of Security Bank. We have a construction project manager, Tom Tessier from Cross Anderson. We have an at-large rural representative who is Daryl Lundberg. We have a commercial landowner and developer who is Mike Stradman. He's also a part of our Headwaters Landlord Associate Association. We have an at-large role, um, for our Beltrami County staff person. Currently, we have Mercy White, who is our managed care program manager serving in that role. And we really felt like this was a good representation, um, across the board from the community, but also brings different perspectives, especially around that development that we're hoping to achieve with this fund. Um, it was made very easy for us when we opened up, um, those roles to the cabinet because we received one letter of interest for every area that we were looking for. So it worked out perfectly. We also have an advisory council for the housing trust fund, um, which is the Beltrami County Collaborative. Our Beltrami County Collaborative is a group of twelve agencies that play various roles within housing. We work together monthly, we meet, and we work together on housing issues. And we identified from the housing trust fund perspective that that already established housing collaborative would be a great place to go for any advisory that that cabinet needs. So there's a variety of insight from that group, and it's interesting to see the level of engagement from the cabinet. We recently conducted a survey with our Beltrami County Collaborative to get some of that necessary feedback. And it was interesting to see the results of the survey. We add, we had four simple questions. First was, when you think of housing in Beltrami County, what word comes to mind? I won't quiz you guys, but it is no surprise that it is limited and expensive. We also asked that advisory committee what type of housing Beltrami County needs the most, what type of housing Beltrami County, or sorry, what, what the barriers are to developing that housing? And then, of course, if money was not an issue, what do you think would have the most impact on Beltrami County's housing challenges? So the responses to that survey were then provided to the cabinet to further educate them on decision-making into the future. The cabinet met for the first time on May fourteenth. The topics that we were going to talk about were funding and eligibility. Um, and it soon became clear that the cabinet would need some additional education, such as the feedback from the collaborative, but also education about what's already occurring in the community, what gaps have been identified by other agencies. So our next few meetings were really taken up by some educational presentations. We heard from Greater Bemidji, we heard from Northwest Minnesota Foundation, North Star Neighbors. We heard from HRDC, we heard from Schuet Companies, who are the owner of Red Pine Estates. We heard from By County Cap, um, and an agency called One Roof Housing out of Duluth. And we also heard a variety of research from the United Way on different, um, different programs across the country that were occurring in housing. So we learned a lot, it expanded the view of the cabinet, I think greatly. Um, and we really identified that the full continuum of housing was needed in our area from rental to workforce to homeownership. And the group identified workforce housing as the largest gap. And under, but there is an understanding that there's a need for all types of housing across the continuum. So as we were doing this education, I did have some personal takeaways. One of the things that I found interesting was the idea of building senior housing. We know that we have an influx of seniors coming into our community, um, but we also have existing seniors who have lived their, their, their whole lives. So we were looking at, okay, if we built a senior housing building, how many single-family homes would that open up to impact that continuum of housing that we need? So just to put it into perspective, a first-time home buyer fifteen years ago was looking at spending approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a starter home. Today, that number is between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand. So the inflationary effects on home purchases are very extreme. And when there isn't very much, um, out there for choice, it really limits those first-time home buyers, and then they remain in rental, um, properties, which is detrimental for them as far as wealth building in our community. So we really want to look at how do we impact the continuum to serve both the seniors and say a senior housing development, but also freeing up single-family homes for our families to move into and stay in our community. After the education, the cabinet looked at what the RFP would look like. Um, we're going to develop an agency RFP and also a developer RFP. So, um, part of the requirement of the funding is that we support housing stability services as well. So the group identified that we would be spending, um, or that we would set aside forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars into an agency RFP to support those housing stabilization services. And then we would have a separate developer RFP. The developer RFP is going to have a pre-application. Um, we want to ensure that the developers really don't waste their time in the process. We want to look at those qualifications through that pre-app before we have the developers do the full RFP process. The agency RFP opened up yesterday. You can find it on the United Ways page, um, and it will run till the end of October. There is a requirement to spend some of that funding on these supportive services, and this is how we're, or how we're meeting that requirement. That distribution of that RFP will be done through the United Ways processes. The cabinet will follow those scored processes to determine who the RFPs are awarded to through the, for the agencies. And we will look at awarding them before the end of the year. There's probably also going to be more than one awarty. So for example, we could have an applicant who wants to do first month's rent, um, and they may ask for five thousand dollars to support people with first month's rent. We could have a agency that comes forward and wants to do housing navigation services. They might ask for fifteen thousand dollars to support that program. So we, we really don't know what we're going to get, but we're anticipating we'll have more than one awarty through that agency process. The developer RFP is going to open in November. It'll be open for approximately two months, and we anticipate that we would award that in January or February of twenty-five. And of course, any awards over the fifty thousand dollars will be brought to this board for approval. So our current funding, um, in the housing trust fund is in a money market account and a CD through First National Bank. The CD incurs four point four-six percent, and the money market incur is one point seven percent. We diversified it to allow access if needed, because of course, if it's in a CD, it has to sit in there for ninety-one days. So currently, we've, um, put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a CD. The amount in the housing trust fund currently is one million seventy-six thousand dollars, one hundred, seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. And we have incurred eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars of interest. So those interest earnings are invested back into our housing trust fund. So we have these two RFPs. One is currently open for the agencies. One will be opening in November for the developers. We hope to award funds into the community before the end of the year for the agencies and early two thousand twenty-five for the developers. Um, so we're excited to be this far along in the process. Do you have any questions for me, Commissioners?
Any questions for Anne? I had a question.
Yes.
Um, how many respondents were there to that survey that was sent out? Any idea?
Fifty, almost fifty.
Okay, so it was more than just a handful.
Yes.
I mean, always sometimes you kind of wonder if you got four responses and go fifty, that's pretty good.
There's twelve agencies on our Beltrami County Housing Collaborative, um, but some, um, have more than one representative. We also let the cabinet members of the trust fund do the survey. So we got a perspective from agency staff, but we also got the perspective from maybe the private industry and development as well.
Okay, I had another question.
Okay.
Did, uh, did the cabinet come up with an approximate breakdown of how they want to spend the money, like direct support for structures, uh, that sort of things that?
No, that's very open-ended right now, and it's open-ended on purpose. Uh, we really want to see what comes in for those development RFP responses. We don't want to limit the responses.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Anne.
All right, thank you.
Tom, are you heading up this discussion or is Jody?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair Commissioner, so. Once again, I'm here to present to you the preliminary budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five as well as the preliminary, uh, levy for next year. I have a quick presentation. I've gone through the majority of this information the last time we met, but, uh, I'll do it just for those who haven't had an opportunity to view it, um, at home and whatnot. And more importantly, just to kind of jog your memory about where we are and maybe solicit some questions, comments, or any of those kinds of things. But, uh, our budget process, I'll quickly go through that here. If I can get this. Okay. There we go. So, uh, the process is long, and it starts, uh, probably about March time or so, and culminates in a number of different activities, all enumerated up here on the screen. Essentially, we're in the end of the, the process where we've developed the budget, and now we're going through the approval process, the review of the budget and, making sure that, uh, what we've presented is in alignment with what the board is, uh, is requesting or wanting in regard to service areas, delivery, that kind of thing. We have to have a approved preliminary budget and levy by the end of this month, uh, statutorily, or we revert back to, uh, the budget that we have right now, which is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget. So we don't want to do that, of course, because there's quite a few changes between this budget and the fiscal year twenty-five budget. But you can see a lot of work goes into this. You can also see the budget committee members, we've already gone through that as well. Moving forward, number of the things that are, are continuing to drive our budget continues to be the economic climate. And I'll just point out the statistic that, you know, in the past four years alone, we've had a twenty percent increase just in CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which measures, you know, obviously, one measure of inflation. So, uh, we've seen this on our operation, this continues to strain our budgets, uh, and that, those are big numbers when you talk about, you know, buying supplies, equipment, materials, those sorts of things. Uh, workforce is also continuing to be a challenge. We are working on that one, you're, you're well aware as the board, as it relates to the efforts we're making, uh, in trying to improve workforce, uh, and keep it competitive and marketable. The, uh, county reserves, we talked a little bit about that, are in good shape, which is great news. Those, uh, when I first started with the county, we're around three and a half, four months or so, and now we've continued to inch those up, which is really great. Uh, property tax base, just as a reminder, will always be a challenge for Beltrami County. We're the second poorest county, um, by, by demographic statistics. Uh, we are the third-largest county, and only one-third of our entire county is actually taxable. So we have a, a large service area with a very small tax base to draw on, provide those services. Growth is continuing to be stagnated as it relates to development of new, uh, infrastructure, uh, although recently we've had some increase in value, um, which is, which has been nice. Uh, the jail continues to be a, a strain on the budget. We, uh, as you know, have been, uh, involved in having to, um, house inmates out of county at extraordinary expense. Uh, also our medical contract, uh, which went up considerably this past year is also straining the budget as well. We had about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in that just year over year. So, uh, that's pretty significant. Uh, and those are things that, you know, we have to, we have to budget for. Uh, hospital level of care expenses, we've talked a lot about this over the past, I won't go into any detail, but, uh, obviously, uh, those are not always predictable. We don't always know how much we might be spending in a, in a given year with a certain, um, one or two, or even maybe a, a few more of our citizens that, that need that level of care. The highway, uh, and all maintenance projects, whether it be bridge replacements or roadway improvement projects, uh, maintenance of existing roadways, uh, chip ceiling, those types of things. Those expenses continue to go up, and those, of course, drive our budget as well. Health and Human Services, we've talked a lot about this, uh, in the past, and I've sent you a number of different, uh, correspondence pieces over the past to, to talk through this. We did have a project, projected budget deficit in Health and Human Services initially, uh, north of two million dollars, uh, and through the good work of leadership, both in finance and also at Health and Human Services, we were able to bring that deficit down. Uh, unfortunately, we couldn't, couldn't get it to zero. So we are having to make an adjustment in regard to, uh, shoring up the budget in Health and Human Services. And that adjustment is, is being made both on the cost reduction, uh, side of things, but it's also being done as well in, uh, shoring up revenues to ensure that we can continue to provide the service levels that, uh, that are needed within our community. Uh, I talked about the types of changes that we're, uh, instituting as it relates to, uh, the cost-reduction strategies that we pursued in Health and Human Services. I won't go into great detail, I've shared this with you, uh, in the past. Uh, and in fact, Anne Lynsath, our Health and Human Services Director, will be speaking shortly about some of these, uh, challenges. And more importantly, the ways in which the department, uh, is pursuing adjustments and improvements to, uh, to keep the, to shore up the deficit and, and keep it solvent in the, the future years. When it gets to the budget itself, uh, here's the highlights. So you can see we have a pretty significant change in revenues and, and corresponding expenses. We do a balanced budget, so every year we have a, the revenues match expenses, we're, we're obligated to do that. So, but you can see that, uh, we have about a thirteen percent increase, uh, from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five in the way of revenues. And that's not all new taxes, a lot of that is existing taxes, uh, reserves that we're utilizing, uh, that we've set aside for projects that are coming up, particularly highway projects. Uh, but some of it is new taxes. One of the new taxes is the local option sales tax, so we have to post that, that money, uh, as we take it in and as we, as we expend it. So right now, we're pulling in about roughly five, five and a half million dollars every year off the local option sales tax. We're not utilizing that full amount, uh, in this next fiscal year because we've only taken out one bond of forty million dollars. Remember, the project is eighty million dollars, so we're only going to be taking half, or we've already, I should say, took half of the, uh, funding, and therefore only be spending half of the funding, and we'll be, we'll be putting the rest of the revenue into the reserve and buying down the next bond, and then hopefully it'll be not another forty million, maybe it'll be thirty-five million. And then hopefully that'll accelerate our payments and keep our costs down by avoiding interest. Nevertheless, we do have to post that revenue and that expense, so that's, that's additional revenue. And then finally, uh, there is a, a modest property tax increase, uh, you know, that helps finance the, uh, growth in the budget, particularly related to a lot of the uncontrollable costs, as I just mentioned, um, you know, wages, uh, also, uh, the to jail, uh, and, uh, the deficit in Health and Human Services. As it relates to intergovernmental funds, uh, there's about five million dollars there, that's, um, an increase. And four of that is coming from state and federal aid money for highway projects. As you know, money comes in, uh, sometimes much greater in one year than it is another. Uh, and also, we, we hold back some money to make sure that we save up to do projects, and so that's what's happening with the additional million dollars in the state, or excuse me, the, um, the additional four million dollars, uh, that's going to the budget to, to pay for the roadway improvement projects. We did get a one million dollar increase in state reimbursement for Health and Human Services, which was good, um, and helped us actually offset some of that, uh, deficit in the department as well. Uh, moving forward and looking at the levy, uh, we are projecting, uh, a seven point eight-eight percent levy increase for this year. Uh, we were floating around four and a half, five percent before, uh, we had to address the Health and Human Services budget. Uh, so it is a little bit higher than we would like. Uh, I think once we get through this hump this year and make that correction, we should be able to expect, uh, less increases than this. And so we'll be working very hard on that in the future. Uh, just a couple of notes here as it relates to how, uh, the levy gets divided up. There's three primary drivers, kind of already touched on this earlier in the presentation. Uh, one point seven percent of the seven point eight or, or seven point nine rounded is, uh, going to the sheriff's office for, uh, jail medical expenses and a couple other ancillary operating costs. Uh, two point six percent's going to salaries, insurance, and benefits. And when I say insurance, it's not just, uh, like health insurance or, uh, benefits for the staff. We also including insurances for like, uh, property loss and damage, liability insurance, those types of things. In fact, we were hit with almost a hundred thousand dollar increase just in our property liability insurance this year. That's a huge driver for us. So those are the kinds of things, well, we can't not have insurance, right? We have to carry insurance, so what do you do? You, you have to pay the, you have to pay the insurance premium. And then three point six percent's going to the Health and Human Services Fund of the levy, uh, to help, uh, reconcile that particular, uh, budget. And, uh, I then just wanted to point out that the new jail debt service is funded by sales tax, not property taxes, and that's why it's not part of the levy. Some folks, uh, get that confused. So the anticipated revenue sources, we continue to do quite well as it relates to spending other people's money. I say this so often, uh, intergovernmental funding that comes from the state and federal government is the most, uh, significant contributor to revenues and is extraordinarily important for us. Imagine having our budget, uh, which is currently, uh, financed, only one-third of which by property taxes. Imagine financing the entire budget with property taxes, and it would be three times the property tax amount that, uh, that we currently pay. Of course, that would be untenable. So, uh, so again, only one-third of the budget's made up by taxes, the rest is in services, fees, uh, and then intergovernmental revenues. Uh, when it relates to where we spend the funds, uh, not much has changed in this pie chart. We continue to, to see the majority of spending in our mission-critical areas. Uh, this is the reason we have counties in the state of Minnesota to provide social services, public safety, and highway and streets. Those are the dominating, uh, cost centers. General government is kind of all the other things in, in county government that supports those types of service, whether it be HR, IT. Um, it's also going to be legal, um, finance, and so on and so forth. So that's, that's what the, uh, general government, uh, expenditure is. Um, I talked about the audit for staff positions. I won't go back into that, other than to say that when we reconcile this budget against, uh, what is needed in regards to future positions, uh, we are, we are making a, a couple of different modifications, uh, this next year. So the net difference, though, bottom line is two point three eight FTEs are being recommended to be added to the budget. Uh, we'll be adding, uh, you'll see more than that, but we're also taking away five, so it's really the net is two point three eight. Uh, you can see that, uh, where we're adding them up here, uh, about point two-five or a quarter time FTE, uh, to round out the GIS support, technician to make it a full-time position. A point one-three FTEs is going to custodial, which comes with a budget, uh, that would be rent revenue that we received recently, um, by leasing new space. Uh, the account technician two and the RN or social worker, two FTEs between the both of them are going to public health, and that is fun, fully funded by, uh, public health grants, uh, which are, uh, sustainable grants, they're not just one-time grants, so they're, they're reoccurring. Uh, we are adding four correctional officers, and this is an attempt to reduce. We are adding four correctional officers and this is an attempt to reduce the amount of funding that we're putting towards out-of-county housing. But right now we've got significant dollars going to out-of-county housing. We feel like if we can just add four additional correctional officers, which we'll eventually need anyways for the new jail, we can reduce the amount that we're spending to out-of-county housing. And so this has a two-for-one investment return. If we can add these four correctional officers, we should be able to save twice the cost that it will take to finance these correctional officer positions. So we feel like that's good financial sense. A financial specialist is being added to the auditor treasurer's office. That workload has just continued to grow. There's a lot of processing, certainly more elections, just a lot going on in that department and they haven't grown for a very long time. So that's being recommended to be added. And then there's the reduction of the five positions we've already talked through in Health and Human Services. Those have already been achieved to date and our director of Health and Human Services will be talking about that. We do rely heavily on American Rescue Act plan funding and we'll have to wean ourselves off of this funding. This is one-time funding. We use it to essentially purchase one-time activities or, I should say, equipment or those types of things. But we also use it as a funding strategy to help buy ourselves some time to wean off that primarily one-time funding to something more sustainable. And so that's what's been done. We have a request of about $1.9 million in the budget for next year. That will leave us with about 1.4 million rounded available out of the 9.2 or 9.3 or so that we took in at the, you know, during the pandemic. So we have spent, I believe, this money in a very regimented, very methodical and thoughtful way, which has allowed us to have it endure as a part of our budget for such a long period of time. That's been extraordinarily beneficial to us. But we will be moving away from that. The good news is that we have some expiring debt that will be coming off the books and we're hopeful that the transition between this ARPA dollars and the needs that we have for next year can be somewhat accommodated by that. So just really quickly, you know, putting the budget together is a monumental activity. It requires the efforts and time of a lot of people. We just want to make sure that those are recognized here. I won't go through everybody I did that last time we met. But certainly we appreciate the budget committee's work, finance and others that support the work as well. The department heads too are extraordinarily phenomenal to work with in putting the budget together. Everybody pulls together and knows what the task is and what the challenge is and they come together and they work to achieve that. So that's been really great. The activity associated with the budget going forward is we are hopeful that tonight, particularly during the regular session, there'll be a motion to adopt or modify or something. And that will allow us then to set the preliminary budget and preliminary levy. And then in December, we'll have the final budget and the final levy adoption, which has to occur before the end of the year. And then there's some different notices that go on between now and then as well. But what we wanted to do today in teeing this conversation up in the work session is give the board sufficient time, you know, to ask questions, you know, debate or discuss anything associated with a budget that you'd like. And hopefully we can get those questions answered and addressed and then move towards adoption in the regular session at some point. That's all I have for you as it relates to formal presentation, but I know that Anne has a few things she'd like to say as well about the budget. And so I'll invite her up as well and we'll talk a little bit about Health and Human Services.
Anne Lynn Seth, again, Health and Human Services Director. I'm going to talk about some of the same information that was shared with the full, with the budget committee, with the full board. But I also want to just share some general information about the Health and Human Services budget to start out with. We have three specific areas in our budget. We have economic assistance, we have our public health, we have social services. Those coincide with the three divisions within Health and Human Services and they're funded differently. So we kind of refer to them as three separate pots of funding within one budget. We have our economic assistance budget and economic assistance covers our income maintenance programs for the people who are processing public benefit programs such as medical assistance or SNAP. We have our child support programming under economic assistance, employment services, MA transportation and fraud. And the way that those programs are funded is that we report our costs and then the state pays back a percentage of those costs. And that percentage of reimbursement is different based on every one of those program areas. So for income maintenance, we get roughly 50% back. For our child support, we get 66% back. For employment services, it's 100%. For MA transportation, it's 100% and for fraud, it's 100%. So we have a way to look at those costs and know that we would be likely getting those percentages back from reimbursement from our state lead agency. So when we look at the economic assistance budget, only 28% of that specific pot of money is funded by local levy dollars. It is important to know that all public program benefits that are issued by income maintenance are issued from the state of Minnesota. For example, if we have an eligibility worker and they process an application and a benefit is issued in food support, for example, that's coming from the state of Minnesota. Those benefits never hit our budget, our local budget. That comes from the state of Minnesota. Primarily what the costs are with the economic assistance is the administrative work to operate the program. So it's the staffing and the staffing related costs primarily in that budget area. We then have our public health budget area and public health is primarily, well, it is totally funded by the Department of Health. We have public health grants that are applied for that are legislated and ongoing and that continues to fund 100% of public health work. Public health preventative work has increased in scope over the last five years pretty significantly. But the Minnesota Department of Health has significantly increased the grants available to fund that programming. So there is no local levy cost for public health. The final pot of funding in the Health and Human Services budget is social services. And social services programming is things like child protection, adult protection. Social services is serving our most vulnerable populations, our seniors, our vulnerable adults and our children. And the funding for social services is different. It is funded through some specific allocations from the state. There's some billing opportunities and there's something called time study that also funds social services. One of the issues that we see is that allocations in social services are not increasing to match the inflationary costs that we're seeing. We also have increasing costs around mental health placements and probation placements. Those placements are increasing on average, well, they have increased on average over 20% in the last three years. We're also seeing many more of these placements necessary for our youth, our adult. Also, we have mental health placements that are quite costly in this budgetary area. So when you look at this budgetary area specifically, 43% of the total budget is coming from our county, local county levy dollars. So it's just kind of breaking down how that funding goes into each of those three pots and really where we see the biggest challenge in that social service area because we're supplementing more with local levy dollars than what is coming in through state agency dollars. So that brings us to the challenges that we're looking at in 2025. So what happened? We, I mentioned, we noticed in 2023 a dramatic increase in those mental health and probation placement costs. And we brought together a group of interested individuals, including probation, including some county commissioners, to talk about what's happening with these placements. Why are we seeing them increase? And there's a variety of reasons. I do think COVID had something to do with it. Youth were not treated early on in mental health and so they got to crisis levels during COVID. And so we saw a huge need for very intensive programming for youth following COVID. We also saw the labor crunch happen. So not only were we seeing more kids needing these placements, but the costs for these placements were pretty dramatic. We also know that there's not as many of the placements available as what's necessary. So there was concerns about what is going to happen if we have a youth that we can't find a placement for? What does that look like for the county? So we had all these conversations starting in 2023 and tried to find ways to mitigate some of these rising costs. Then in May of 2024, it was determined that our reimbursements around federal 4E and our state out-of-home placement costs or our state out-of-home placement aid were going to reduce in 2025 by approximately a million dollars. So we have a million dollars of lost revenue in those two revenue streams for social services. And we have an approximate increase of $700,000 in mental health and probation placements for '25. So there we are at 1.7 million dollars of need right there. Then when you throw in, we need an approximate $400,000 to fund our COLA for our staff for 2025. And your regular inflationary things that we're seeing go up, simple things such as supplies, that's what gets you to that a little bit north of $2 million budgetary deficit that Tom referenced in his presentation. So, you know, there are things that we can control around these costs, but unfortunately some of the costs are things that we need to consider what is occurring with these youth. So if we have youth that are suicidal, they need to be put into appropriate placement. If we have probation kids who have done a criminal act, for example, maybe we have a youth sex offender. They need to go to sex offender treatment. That is some of the processes that we have to follow. But there are also things we can do to control those costs. And those are some of the conversations we had when we started talking about cost-saving measures moving into the future. We knew that a north of $2 million levy increase ask was absolutely not possible for our tax base. And so that's when we really went to the drawing board and we said, okay, how do we cut some of these costs into 2025 without having dramatic impacts on our programming? And so we were very strategic. We started looking at program and process changes first. So what statutorily mandated programming can maybe be reduced? What processes do we have in Health and Human Services that we can shore up for efficiency or cost saving? And so we identified some of those and they're in that PowerPoint that Tom had for you that says, here's the programmatic changes and here's the process changes that we're implementing for, actually, we're implementing them immediately. But unfortunately, with those program and process changes, we did not see the cost-saving impact the deficit as substantially as we had hoped. And so we had to look at workforce changes at that point. And we had those same considerations around statutory mandates, but we also then consider the workload associated with some of the statutorily mandated programs that are operated. And so we did identify five positions that will be, that have been now sunset through attrition. So three of them at the time that they were identified were open positions, so they were not filled. And two of them, we would sunset with the natural turnover of staff, which has already occurred since we identified that we had these budgetary challenges. So we had our truancy social worker, a licensing social worker, a parent support outreach social worker, an adult services case aide and a community health worker as the identified positions to sunset through attrition. And we have achieved that goal already. Despite that, despite these many challenging changes that Health and Human Services is implementing, we do continue to need an additional, a little bit over a million dollar levy support to continue our operations without having any more substantial impact on our programming. That's what makes up that 3.6% of the proposed 2025 levy increase to support Health and Human Services operations. I do want to note and highlight again, social services is an area that is very critical for our community and it is serving a very vulnerable population. There are some things that we're going to do into the future to advocate for more appropriate funding levels for our social services budgetary area. And again, keeping in mind, economic assistance is a separate budgetary area. Public health is a separate budgetary area. We have some limited ability to have public health support some of our programming in social services and we have done that to the best of our ability to advocate or to allocate those resources to support social services programming. There was an at, or there is an ask for 2025 from public health for two positions. And that is based on the increase in their requirements for their programming, but also comes with funding along with it. So we have those positions in your budgetary packet for approval. And it is one of the reasons that I wanted to highlight the separate areas of our budget and how they're kind of different pots of money because it doesn't, it's a little confusing when you think about, okay, there's a reduction of positions in one area, but an ask in another area. It is very specific to the funding sources available for those programs. To highlight the request from public health, public health prior to 2019 had 12 MD Minnesota Department of Health grants. We now have 21 grants that require quite a bit of administrative work. So that is where some of those requests for those two positions are going to support the fiscal requirements of some of that ongoing grant management and that increase in workload. So what are we going to do into the future? So through this budget process, there were some identified areas of focus for the future. And while we're going to be implementing all the cost-saving measures that have been outlined, we're also going to change the way that we budget and track moving forward. Currently, we're in a process in collaboration with our county attorneys to identify our minimum mandated service levels. We are wanting to do this to establish the county's statutory requirements in social services and the level that Health and Human Services is meeting those requirements ongoing. We're also looking at the past three years of position additions. We want to determine the level of funding each received compared to the expected revenue that we had thought each of those positions would receive when we requested them from this board. We're also placing a large emphasis on legislative changes and advocacy. Unfortunately, Health and Human Services across the state have inadequate funding and experienced many unfunded statutory mandates, as well as it seems some disregard for increasingly cumbersome administrative processes that are handed down from our state lead agencies. It's really important that we have a strong voice at our state Capitol to lobby for these changes and things that will impact our county agencies in providing strong human services without overburdening our taxpayers. We know that we have a limited tax base and so counties like ours are unique and we need to have that voice down at the Capitol because we can't keep absorbing some of these unfunded mandates that we receive. So I have identified legislative areas of focus for '25. We're looking at the continuum of care for mental health for both adults and children. We want to focus on substance use disorder and that county cost share that goes along with it. We want to focus on system modernization. We operate off state systems that are very antiquated and not efficient. We've been advocating for years for improvements there and we have not seen substantial improvements at all for counties. And we got to keep going back to the legislature to revisit bills that have already passed where it's increasing that county workload and it doesn't come along with any funding. We're also going to be instituting a financial monitoring, performance monitoring program so that we can assist ourselves in projecting. Some additions to the budgeting process that we're adding in outside of our monthly monitoring and our revenue maximization is we're going to be developing budgeting dashboards for our program managers. We're going to be developing key performance indicators or KPIs. We're going to look at variance analysis. We're going to work to refine our resource allocation methods. We're going to have continued communication and collaboration with our internal partners and we're going to focus on a long-term goal of having a healthy and appropriate Health and Human Services Reserve Fund. So in summary, while Health and Human Services has budgetary challenges currently, the causes have been identified and this level of revenue loss is not anticipated to occur in the future. With the cost-saving adjustments that we've made, the current levy request will support continued program operations through '25 without more significant reduction in program services. With continued financial management and legislative action to support Health and Human Service programs more globally, the agency is working towards ongoing financial solvency. It is very critical that we continue to work towards some legislative changes around the mental health continuum of care and those chemical dependency related placement costs because those are huge budget drivers and will continue to be budget drivers into the future. We can't sustain the continued cost of those placements, nor can many counties across the state. This is not specific to Beltrami County as we see those costs increase. So it's really critical that we advocate for that continuum of care to serve people in need, but also to protect counties from these rising costs. So with that, do you, what questions do you have for me?
Questions for Anne? Richard?
I don't know if it's a question, Ann, as much as a a reoccurring theme is the unfunded mandates and the legislature, legislature not being tuned in to what they're passing as far as a result of our, what it does to us. In the years that I've been on the board, the same kind of thing seems to kind of keep making its way through uh each department. But uh, I, I agree with you that the cost just can't, we just can't keep up with it. If they're going to make some changes, then they also need to fund it.
Just an interesting side note, I received an email, I think it was yesterday. Um, and it's from a state agency and they're requesting our assistance in identifying how much a bill that had passed in the 24 session is going to cost counties ongoing. So it was already passed in the 24 session and now they're reaching out to counties at this point to see how much it's going to cost us to administer it, which is also going to take administrative and staff time to respond to their request, so.
Joe?
Have the uh, the two social worker positions that are proposed to be in cut, have those employees been notified? Are they uh, are they still going to be employed through the end of the year?
No one is being laid off, so the changes, the reduction in workload is being made through attrition. So um, what occurred is that we had two s- social work staff leave the agency for other reasons. And the social workers who were in the identified uh roles to be sunset were then reassigned a workload into those social work roles. And that's already occurred, so no one will be laid off from the agency.
Okay. But there were two social worker positions that were identified to be eliminated. And those two employees have received other positions?
Yes, so there's five positions in total that are being eliminated for 25 and currently. Um, the community health worker position, the adult services case aid and the truancy social worker position were all open. So they just will not be refilled. The licensing social worker and the parent support outreach social worker have been reassigned into other social work positions.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just kind of curious, what is the, the parent outreach social worker? What is their, their roles and how might this uh affect the, the position and, and parent outreach? I'm assuming that they reach out to parents and, and can you, can you?
So a parent support outreach social worker, parent support outreach is a program and it is a statutorily mandated program that we have to offer through Health and Human Services, but is a voluntary program for families to participate in. Um, so we have seen a reduction in the number of families who are choosing to work in, with the parent support outreach program over the last number of years.
So do you know why they are choosing not to participate? Is, is it the lack of, of knowing or, or how, how is, how are parents made aware of?
We often make referrals to parent support outreach when we have families who are coming in through our children's services intake. So if we are receiving referrals in through that program and maybe they're not meeting a level to be screened in for other services, then we make the referral for the parent support outreach program.
Because I imagine at, at time that we're in, with, with high inflation, the cost of foods, the, the, the cost of living, rent, you know, I imagine, you know, that there are parents that, you know, might be affected by this. But so is there something else in place that will be taken over for?
So we are going to continue to operate the parent support outreach program. It's just that not one specific social worker will be assigned to it. We will share that workload in our child protection team.
So sharing a workload costs more, uh, causes more work for, for the employees that are sharing the workload, correct? So.
It does.
How is that, how is that going to affect their, their ability to, to perform their, their duties?
So we looked at our statutorily mandated programming. So we had a cultural social worker position, uh, halftime position that we are also going to look to distribute some of that workload. So we're really working hard to minimize the negative impact of workload distribution by looking at areas where we can either be more efficient or reduce the required workload per the statutory mandates.
Because I, I believe, you know, uh, one of our greatest assets here in, in Beltrami County is our employees and I want to make sure that, you know, that they're, they're taken care of, you know, that their, their workload is sufficient where, where it's not causing burnout and them leaving to, you know, a different county that, that offers more money and less workload. So it's kind of curious, maybe a question for Tom, Mr. Chair is, so there's 1.3 remaining in, in ARPA. I was kind of curious what the plans are for that and is there any way that we can expand some of that to help uh, with the, the burden of, of Health and Human Services with their unfunded mandates? And hopefully, you know, figure out a way to address this in the coming year.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sumner, uh, as I mentioned before, there's about 1.36 million of available ARPA dollars remaining. If the board approves what's being recommended in this next fiscal year budget, uh, that amount being 1.9 million rounded. So um, each year, as the board had decided years ago when we first got the ARPA dollars, the budget committee would make recommendations based on need, based on available funding, uh, and a application of what was then the rules around ARPA towards the, the various funding allotments. Um, some of those rules have been loosened because of the way that we've accounted for that funding and the treasury um guidance and rules that have since gone by the wayside, if you will. But uh, the 1.36 million that's available, should the budget get approved as it's being recommended, for next year will have to go through, unless the board decides some other process, the budget committee process again to make recommendations. My guess is that there, it, next year will be the last year when we do budgeting, which would means the fiscal year 26 budget will be the last year that we will have available ARPA dollars. Now, you could decide uh tonight or, or along this process that you want to take the, the remaining ARPA dollars in total and apply it to some uh aspect of the operation. Um, my recommendation would be to be cautious about using one-time money for ongoing expenses. Unfunded mandates are an ongoing uh endeavor, unfortunately. And so while we may be able to buy down the impact of, of a year or two, depending upon what that impact is financially and, and how it compares to what we have with available ARPA dollars, um, at some point in time, the ARPA dollars will be expired and then you'll be back to the same challenge you have. So uh, this is the reason for the great emphasis um of ensuring that we develop a strong legislative platform, that we work with our associations and, and other agencies and our, our um, uh, our other governmental partners, particularly counties, to draw attention to these unfunded mandates and try to get them corrected through the legislative process. That's really our best opportunity to try to gain some ground uh as it relates to the impact of these unfunded uh mandates. Uh, and that's also, as you know, why we did hire a lobbyist, uh, for a number of different reasons. The lobbyist we've been using for the last two years has been helping us gain significant ground uh in certain areas. You might recall the issue associated with uh the out-ofplacement costs that ran us almost $350,000 into the hole. Uh, were resolved with our lobbyist's effort and, and recouping that money and getting the state to pay for that. So uh, so there are, there are efforts and strategies that are being undertaken on a number of different fronts. But as you, as you suggested, certainly, one of those options is to throw additional uh ARPA dollars at the, at the issue. Um, but I just would caution you that at some point, those monies don't uh, will not, will not be around. And essentially, uh, we will remain with the issue that we have pretty much today.
Okay.
Richard?
Um, just kind of a final thought about mental health and, and the increase in dollars needed for that. Any thoughts where, where we're heading? Is this just going to keep spiraling out of control?
Um, we have some um, good options that are coming out of one of my associations that Jeff Lind and I are a part of. Um, we have an adult mental health initiative fund that is funded by the state um, to support mental health for, mental health um continuum of care for adults. And we are able to independently utilize that locally to support outpatient programming. Nothing like that exists for children. Um, and currently, we're working to push forward a children's mental health initiative to have, of course, funding associated with it. Um, but it would also help to improve that continuum of care for mental health for youth. Um, we're also working to um push forward legislative language through our association around um astronomical cost of care. Uh, so what we're unfortunately experiencing with some youth is um the placement costs of $2,000 to $3,000 a day, um, which no county can absorb. And so we are looking to the state to put together possibly legislative language that would help counties to support those astronomical care costs for kids. So there's some things on the horizon, but there's no easy answer for the mental health challenges that our community and the state and the nation are facing. There needs to be substantial financial investments in that continuum of care um, from the federal government and the state government. Um, and we really need to look at the workforce in that area. Uh, that's where we're really seeing a lot of challenges too, because it's not necessarily, um, if you build it, it can function at 100% capacity, as we saw with the crisis center um that Sanford built. You know, they're, they have to be able to staff those facilities in order for them to serve the community. And I don't have a good answer on that, other than the considerations of somehow incentivizing the work that needs to be done for mental health.
Any other questions for Ann? Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so kind of back to the, the ARPA thing. Um, to me, it, it would just make most sense. And, and to me, and I know most people don't think, you know, the way I do, I, I get that. Um, but the purpose of the ARPA was for uh, to help governments respond to the recovery of COVID. It sounds, and, and if I, I heard a pitch or heard a statement that, you know, we're, we're still transitioning from, from COVID and, and I'm, I'm sure that mental health is, you know, uh, the increase in mental health issues is because of COVID, I'm, I imagine. So to me, it would make most sense that the board, whether it's now or, or next year, you know, we really think about, you know, allocating some of these remaining funds to uh Health and Human Services, you know, because looking through the budget, um, you know, uh, $400,000 for, for five squads. The, the county jail, you know, cost, uh, the, the list goes on, you know, looking at the highway, you know, a grinder, $60,000, you know, how much, you know, wha- what, uh, what cost? You know, do we try to save a dollar, you know, to that? You know, really might have an impact on, on the, the people that we serve, you know? Is their mental health a little bit more or less important than, than what the upper proposal, ARPA proposal is for, for this year? Uh, because I don't see anything in here that, you know, has anything for Health and Human Services. I, I don't know, I, I might, I might be off track, but you know, I, I feel like, you know, we got to do something to, to help Health and Human Services, you know. Uh, the administrator is just a one, you know, this is a one-time money, but I mean, let's not waste the one-time money. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
If I could just say one thing, COVID is an exacerbating factor to many challenges, but it certainly is not the only reason that we're seeing challenges around mental health for children and adults. So if you said, can you show me a statute that's, or uh, some data that says that COVID i- is the cause of this? I cannot do that. I can make a guess that when youth are not able to get community services, which happened during COVID, that then the level of crisis is going to increase if they're not treated. But I certainly can't say that that is the only or primary reason that we're seeing the challenges we're seeing.
Tom?
Mr. Chair, I'd just add, because I think Commissioner Sumner, Sumner makes a, a really good point. And, and this budget did attempt in a, in a great way to help Health and Human Services out. The, the 3.6% or 1.1 million dollars of additional new funding for Health and Human Services, uh, that comes from a levy increase that's being recommended. So 7.9% levy, uh, 3.6 of that um is, is intended for the long-term sustainable financing of the Health and Human Services operation. Uh, so we felt that it, as a budget committee, it was more important to identify long-term sustainable funding uh, that would deal with these issues going forward than to utilize one-time money that would then um cause us to have to revisit the same issue at some point in the future when that funding uh was expired. So uh, I, I just, I, I absolutely hear the concern. We are very attentive about that as we were doing our work. But we just felt that we wanted to place the emphasis on shoring up the needs in Health and Human Services with ongoing funding, which is why it's placed in the levy at this point in time.
Um, I guess I'll just add that I was at the Minnesota, the Minnesota Rural County Caucus meeting last week and I'm hearing all over all kinds of counties, eight to 12% levies. And a lot of it has to do with the inflation that has happened over the last four or five years. Um, it's just really has taken its toll. If you can imagine, if inflation has come down, you say, well, that's great. But it's still an inflation and those higher inflated prices are still high and then another 2% on top of that. And so it's, it's, and, and a lot of those counties are rich counties. I mean, they're counties that have 80% taxable land instead of 30% taxable land. And so when I heard that, I started to not feel quite as bad. But, but it was, it was shocking what I was hearing for levy numbers from other counties.
You have something else, Tim?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, so I, I don't, I don't know if we're done with HHS, but uh, if we, if we are.
Can we excuse that so she doesn't have to keep adding them? Is that a, thank Ann, thank you very much, I appreciate your, that excellent.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So uh, back to ARPA, I'm just kind of curious. How you got to this point, you know, what, what was the request uh of the sheriff's office? You know, that's almost a half a million dollars. Uh, did they, were they awarded all five squads or did they come in with, with a request of eight? Or how was that negotiated? Uh, maybe the same with um, uh, the highway department? You know, how, how was all this negotiated to utilize uh ARPA?
Uh, those are excellent questions, Commissioner Sumner. So I'll, I'll start with the sheriff's office. The sheriff and I have a good relationship that on the budget has spanned now three years or two and a half years or so. The, the sheriff's office is an office that is almost entirely funded by the levy. So as you, as you saw on the pie chart that I provided uh earlier, uh, there are different types of operations that we run across the county and different funding sources for those operations. When it comes to the highway department and it comes to uh the sheriff's office, the dominant funding source for those two activities is uh the property tax levy. So in the sheriff's office, uh, what we were attempting to do was to buy down essentially the levy need that would otherwise be required to finance those one-time items by shifting the revenue uh need from the levy to ARPA dollars. Each of the ident, uh, each of the items identified here, the, the five squad cars, uh, the body cameras and then the investigator squad car, that, that total, as you say, close to half a million dollars, is money that was originally in the budget and drove the levy up by an additional uh almost 2%. So had we not utilized ARPA dollars, our levy request to you would be nine point uh, whatever it is, 9.88%. Uh, we, we as a team look. We, we as a team looked at that and said, that's, that's just too high. These are one-time expenses. We have this funding called ARPA. That's where we've been utilizing as one-time funding. It makes sense to just buy down that particular cost and shift that revenue source from property tax levy. To ARPA dollars. The other thing that does for us is, is it preserves the savings inside the levy indefinitely. Because if we were to put that half a million dollars into the levy for this year. And the sheriff's office purchased those vehicles and those body cameras. The levy would need to be reduced the following year in order for it to only be a one-year hit on the levy. And more often than not, that doesn't happen. And so that's how we get creep in the budget. And this is another thing that I've been trying to guard against so that we don't ask for more than we need in any one year. And then forget to lower or program other needs into that what was supposed to be a one-time funding, but ended up in an ongoing funding. Formula. So we're, we're trying to be cautious of that as well. When it comes to the highway department, kind of the same approach was taken. We're trying to offset what would normally be levy-related impacts. And shift the revenue or shift the, the money source to ARPA. So that's the same thing that happened there. As it relates to GIS. There, there are some funds that can be used in GIS, like the Recorders Fund. But we've been utilizing that pretty heavily as well. So we wanted to be cautious about the reserve levels in that fund. And the PLS or PLSS Corner Remonumentation has been a project the county's been doing for a very, very long time. And we had a long conversation about whether we should, you know, continue at the same level that we've been doing. Or if we should scale that back, if we should try to go after the grant that we were unsuccessful in getting at the state level last year. And the, the group decided that we're pretty close to the finish line and we wanted to essentially push forward. As, as much as we could to get the last couple of remaining townships done. This doesn't complete the project, but it gets us that much closer. So the, the recommendation was, yes, let's go ahead and use ARPA dollars. We've been doing that for the last three years. Well, except for last year, as I say, because we tried to get the grant. So let, let's continue the momentum there. And then finally, the storage building is, is a gap funding. Contribution from ARPA, again, one-time money. There's about $400,000 that is available already that we've saved. Both between Environmental Services and the Soil and Water Conservation District and Natural Resources Management. Funds. So we have sort of those three funds, then we're adding ARPA to create a fourth revenue fund. Again, being creative and innovative about all of these different sources of funding so that we can get the project done. And then that's why we only need 300,000 or about 40% of the total cost of that. And then finally, the labor cost, 2025 labor cost there is miscellaneous. That is the last sort of stipend or installment, if you will. Of the weaning off of, of a couple of COLA increases that we provided the staff during the pandemic. And when we had that 9% CPI and everybody around us was, was getting pretty, wages were just growing through the roof. So we created, as you might recall, several years ago, a, a funding strategy. We were using ARPA dollars in lesser and lesser amounts and feed, and then I shouldn't say feeding, but replacing that. ARPA dollars with levy or, or grants or other dollars, other sources of more sustainable funding. So that's how each of these sort of came to be and how the ARPA dollars is, is sort of been historically used. It doesn't mean, I mean, these ARPA dollars are the county board's ARPA dollars. If you can, you can decide to use them really however you want. We just operated as a budget committee in the same way that we have historically. Which was the sort of policy direction that the board gave us, you know, back in 2021 or so, 22, when we, when we first received these funds. So, but again, the rules really now around those funds are, are yours to, to sort of modify.
Mr. Chair, I think I asked. If, if the, the five squads, was, was that the, the initial ask? Or were, were there more? Was there a request for more squads or? So, or the sheriff discusses his full, full request?
Yeah. So last year, we delayed squad car purchases. And that was intentional. We just, the, the levy was what we felt was at a max. And so we pushed squad cars off. They are on a rotation. We've asked for the, for the fleet analysis to see if we might be able to. Expand the rotation to an additional year and see what the impact is, because obviously the longer you own a squad vehicle. The more maintenance you're going to have on that vehicle. And at some point, you have this, you know, deteriorating return on investment where. You know, you're putting more into maintenance than you are actually, you know, purchasing a new vehicle over time. So we were doing those analyses last year, put off the vehicles, felt good about that. So this year is a little bit of a makeup of some of those vehicles. They would like additional vehicles. I think they wanted one additional one that we delayed. It's an investigator vehicle. Those don't get run as heavily as the squads do. Obviously, the squads are doing pursuits. They're running a lot more frequently. More than an investigator's vehicle. So, so our, our chief deputy has decided that he's going to take one of the ones that was. Going to get replaced and keep it and give his, his vehicle, you know, down the line. So we, we are. Through the help of the sheriff's office, finding ways to continue to reduce impacts and keep the operation going responsibly. And so, yeah, I, I think if you, the sheriff was here, he'd say, yeah, I could use two more. But, you know, we've kind of negotiated this, you know, approach that is, I think diligent, methodical, thoughtful.
I think that's helpful. I was just kind of curious. You know, I also want to mention that, you know, the sheriff and I get along really well. It's not that I'm, I'm not trying to attack him or Horace's office. But, you know, people have questions and concerns, so they, they ask me to, to reach out. One, one final question is the LAT CF fund. What, what, what is remaining in that and is, what's? What's, what's it going to be used for?
Yeah, the LAT CF funding, that was the Local Area Tribal Consistency Fund or something to that effect. And you might recall that that was a two-year allocation of $200,000 each to the county. We did receive both allocations or tranches and we hold the 400,000. You as a board did. I want to say last year authorized the use of about $4,000 plus or minus a couple hundred, I think. To what was going to be a National Association of Counties endeavor to create a national. Program that was going to be staffed to look at federal lands and Pilt dollars that come with federal lands. So we've been holding that money and I don't believe that they've requested it yet. They haven't sent it. I don't believe they sent us an invoice. Maybe I'm looking at Jody. Yeah. So no, there's, there's no invoice. I mean, so, you know, other than that encumbrance, which hasn't been taken from the county coffers, you still have. You know, about $395,000 of that funding that was not utilized in this next year's budget. So that's, that is something that's still available to you.
So what would we, what would that be a use for?
I'd have to go back and look at the stipulations on it, but as I recall, it was fairly flexible funding. And so we would be able to use it on quite a bit of, of different types of things. But again, it's only one time and it was a one-time allocation. And we, we haven't gotten any more since, so.
So something should come up in 2025, some sort of request for a program or something that wasn't in our budget that, that would be, that would maybe fall into those. Parameters. That could be something that, well, we could fund it because it's out of budget.
Correct. I would, I would say it's probably pretty close to, you know, how we consider ARPA at this point in time. So you could theoretically suggest that, you know, if you approve the budget. For fiscal year 25 is recommended, you'll have 1.36 million of ARPA plus your 395,000. Of LTAC money and, and that, that could go to help do exactly as you say.
Any other budget questions? Joe?
Tom or Diane, could you go back to that slide about intergovernmental funds, the pie chart? I'm just wondering if, if you could just tell us quickly, even an estimation of how much of that is federal dollars and how much is state dollars?
I would have to either phone a friend, which is our auditor treasurer. Or, or I believe the majority of it is state funding. And, and the state funding that we do get. Or the federal, I should say, the federal funding that we do get often travels through the state. So we get federal funding, goes through the state and the state comes back to us. Jody, would you say it's?
State funding. If you look at the audit report that you received at the last meeting. The last few pages outline all our federal dollars. So you could see what the federal dollars and the makeup of those programs are.
Okay, thank you. And then just real quickly, I know it's not part of the levy, but it's still big picture. How much revenue are we taking in with the new local option sales tax?
It, it varies month by month and we, of course, we've only started taking it recently, but we're projected to take in about 5.6 million. I think it'll end up probably being a little bit higher than that. What we're seeing is some inflation related increase to, to the costs of goods and services. And of course, the taxes that we collect on those increased costs and services end up increasing the tax as well. So. I would say right now safely about five and a half million dollars of annual funding from the local option sales tax. Again, keep in mind. We only have the one bond issuance right now, so we're taking the savings and we're putting that away to buy down the second bond.
The significance, I want to thank the voters again for approval of that last year.
Any other budget questions? With that, we'll move on to Administrator's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just a brief update for you today. I just want to remind you that we have the annual opioid settlement funding meeting. That's been scheduled for October 15th at 6:00 PM. Both, well, all of you are invited as well as the community. It'll be here in the county boardroom. After the board meeting. So we don't typically have a lot of six o'clock meetings, you know, after our regularly scheduled five o'clock meeting. But, but on that particular day, October 15th, we will. And if you're interested, we'd certainly love to have you participate in that. The meeting is also going to be streamed and archived. So if you're unable to make it or want to just view at home, you, you can do that. And then it'll be published on the opioid steering committee website as well. We are working with the University of Minnesota Extension Office to coordinate on SNAP Ed. Programming and service delivery. This came up as part of our conversation with the Extension Office during the. Budget committee meetings. And so we, we realized that, hmm, budget, or I mean, the extension's doing some things on SNAP Ed. We're doing some things on SNAP Ed. I wonder if there's some synergies there. And, and certainly we want to try to reduce duplication of services, but if there's some synergies and some expansion of, of services and that kind of stuff. They're not duplicated. Those would be things we'd be interested in as well. So we'll be meeting this week with the leadership from the Extension Office and of course, Health and Human Services. So that, that's going to hopefully produce some great results. The jail project, we did receive full payment for the Otter Tail easements. I reported on that last time. It's about $43,000, which is great. And that issue's been put to bed. I've also on easements been talking with the city of Bemidji. And we are going to make some progress on, or we have made progress on agreeing at least to the approach. In resolving some of the easement issues on the property. You, you might recall that in the northwest section and along the west edge. We had utility easements. There were some utility infrastructure, water and sewer lines in particular that were out of easement. Or had no easement. And so we've been working with the city to get those back into easement. Doesn't impact our buildable, you know, site. It doesn't impact our building envelope or any of that kind of stuff, but we just want to get the site cleaned up essentially. And then we've decided that we're going to just hold on the ingress egress to Railroad Avenue. On the northeast side. That kind of presents a whole number of other issues that affect the entire corridor. And so the city would like an opportunity to kind of look at the whole corridor and kind of figure all that stuff out later, which is fine with us, because we're compliant. With the requirements and, and that's really not that big of a deal for us either. So, so those easements are, are being addressed. The last remaining easements we have are with the two private property owners, one to the west, one to the east. The one to the east, we seem to be making some headway on. There's an evaluation of the, of the county's proposal. Which seemed to be somewhat favorable, which is great. And then we'll hopefully try to work through that. And then on the west side. There's an encroachment onto our property. Again, doesn't impact, none of these impact the building envelope or constructibility of the site. They're just sort of perimeter issues that we're trying to get cleaned up. But the trailer court that's on the very west edge that has the turnaround that's actually on our property now. That, that needs to be abated and there's some trash and other things that need to be cleaned up there too. So. And then there's a no water easement to serve that facility, which we've offered to, you know, provide. So, because it's essentially a prescriptive easement now anyway, since they've been receiving those services. But. So those are the kinds of things that we're working on as it relates to adjustments on the, on the easements. As you know, we're in the pre-qualification stage for bidders. The formal pre-qualification process is over, but we continue to pre-qualify those. That, that express an interest in the project. Just a reminder, anybody who's going to bid on the project must be pre-qualified in order to bid. And then we're going to hold the pre-bid meeting on October 1st and then bidding will begin immediately after and, and remain open for several weeks. So. After that, we will be marching toward a November evaluation of bids and hopefully the development of the guaranteed maximum price. And that's when we'll know what this project's really going to cost us. So estimates are good at the moment. So we're feeling pretty good about that. But we'll know for sure hopefully by November time. Just a reminder that the management team is going to host its team building event tomorrow afternoon. And so we'll be available by phone if you have any questions or need to get in touch with us or any of that kind of stuff. But I just want to let you know where we are. If you're roaming the building, looking for a department head, we'll be out and about team building. And then lastly, the groundbreaking ceremony for the new jail. Has been slated for Wednesday, September 25th at noon on the site. And that site again is at the northwest corner of Railroad Avenue and Pioneer Street. And that's the update I have for you, but I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Tom? All right. Any other business? Let's take a look at the agenda. Is there any changes that we need to make to the upcoming agenda? Nope, seeing none, then we'll stand adjourned until 5 o'clock.